Thank you.
Greeting Board, School Board. Last night, y'all chose to keep three books which are immoral in our school libraries, two of which have absolute moral filth within them. One of the decisions to keep one of the books by a, they were called a famous author, was that there had been no complaints that had been made by parents for some 20-plus years, so he voted for the book. And I would like to ask for a higher standard going forward when we're evaluating choosing a book. Parental complaints, or my complaints even, really are not the standard for what we would choose to have in our school libraries. And we need to decide basically, and it's, it goes back to what God says, on the day of judgment, will God be okay with a certain book being in a school? And if it's sexually immoral, if it is against the expressed commands of God, and it's wicked, then we need to not have it. It doesn't matter what the literary value is. I've read plenty of books in my day and was a great fan of Dostoevsky, read almost all of his books. Any one of his books had something filthy in them, I would request it not be in the school. Because a child doesn't need filth, no matter how literary, whatever that value is of the literary content, they don't need filth. I don't give filth to my kid. And not moral filth. Their brains are filled with that, just the same as anyone else's. So if I read a book as drama, and it's two boys kissing at the end, so that that book, by the school board and by this state, we're saying, we condone this behavior for children. Because that's what the book's intention is. And so then the board is saying, each one of you, I condone homosexuality for children. And so you've made a moral decision before God, for the education of our children. And it's wrong. I mean, it's just dead wrong. And it's sin. And we can repent of sin and ask for forgiveness, but going forward, we have to have a guideline that is beyond our, even our own thoughts. We have to look to Scripture to decide what we're gonna feed our children. We don't have another source that's higher than that. There isn't any. What do we base any beliefs on? We can either pull it out of a hat, or we can look to something that's concrete. God exists, and He does, He's, there is going to be a judgment, and it's going to happen over this stuff that we're deciding on. It's very serious, especially when it deals with children. I've read this scripture to y'all so many times, Luke 17. You cause a child to sin, it would be better that a millstone were put around your leg and you'd be thrown into the sea. Sexual immorality, these books that are describing like sex scenes, how could that not be something to cause a child to stumble? I mean, are we gonna have a child getting aroused when he's reading books in our school library? I don't think that you all should be paying attention, like I said, to anything other than the truth. You know, Jesus said, woe to you and all people speak well of you, for so their fathers did to the false prophets. And we can please God, or we can please men. And that's it. I mean, you either take a stand, if everyone in the world hates you, you might wind up being a friend of God. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Schneier. Our next speaker is Dorothy Fowler. She has six minutes, three minutes donated from Darzel Warren. Darzel? Okay.
(laughing). Good evening. The last time I addressed you was at the December board meeting, when I spoke on behalf of the teachers at Bellevue Elementary School. This time, I am addressing you as a former teacher. I would like to take a moment to update you on my story since that night. At that time, we teachers were simply asking for clarification and a conversation to be had regarding the principal decision at our school. We felt that the decision that had been made was unfair, unjust, and without regard for the students, families, and staff at Bellevue. We called on the superintendent to address our concerns to us as a staff, so that our voices could be heard. We were not expecting any decisions to be overturned at that time. We just wanted to make sure he understood that we did not think his decision was in the best interest of anyone at Bellevue, and hopefully gain some insight as to why the decision was made. We were never granted that opportunity. Instead, we were completely ignored. Many of us reached out to no avail. So on January 10th, at our report card pickup night, I addressed the parents that were in attendance. I let them know about the decision that had been made, how it would affect their students. I told them that most of the teachers felt it was not made in the best interest of the students, and I presented them with a petition that gave them all the details of the situation, and asked for them to show their support by signing it. The very next day, I was suspended. While I did not, while I did expect some sort of retaliatory action, what I did not expect was for our assistant principal to be suspended as well. Since that day, seven weeks passed before we heard anything at all. As for me, that was seven weeks of my kindergarten class having no idea what happened to their teacher. Seven weeks of not being able to find a sub to fill my place. Seven weeks of inconsistency for those students, after most of them had been between two to four different teachers before having even come to me. Seven weeks of an extra burden being placed on my coworkers due to having to split my class. And finally, without any warning at all, they dissolved my class and told my coworkers that I was not allowed to return. The very next day, I was pressured to resign from my position under the threat of not only termination, but having my certificate revoked if I decided to fight the decision. As for our assistant principal, it has been 10 weeks now, with no end in sight. 10 weeks of students, families, and staff having no idea when they might again get to see their administrator, administrator, sorry, that they had grown to no trust and love. 10 weeks of inexperienced and ineffective leadership attempting to start from scratch. 10 weeks of teachers feeling as though their experience, expertise, and opinions simply don't matter. 10 weeks of Mrs. Jenkins having no contact with the staff that she considers family. I urge you to take a look at other schools in our district that our superintendent has treated the same way. The first two examples that come to my mind are Montclair Elementary, where he brought in a principal from out of state. This school that had previously made so much improvement now has almost zero veteran staff members, and therefore no ties to the community or the students. Or Lincoln Park Elementary, who had a nearly identical situation involving their assistant principal just last school year. This kind of behavior destroys the morale and communities that our administrators work so hard to build. He continues to show that he has no regard for what is best for our students or communities, and has even less regard for the professional and experienced opinions of our teachers. At what point do we step in and say enough is enough? The excuse I always hear is, oh, it's like that everywhere right now. And it may be, but it doesn't have to be that way here. Please do the right thing tonight, and vote to return the superintendent position to an elected position. Only elected officials can be held to the expectations of the people they serve, and that is what our current superintendent needs to be reminded of, that he serves us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.[542.41][542.41](applause).
Board members, if you want the accurate and full story on that, I can speak with you one-on-one on that. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to say that publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Our next speaker is Mr. Caleb Lovely.
Good evening, community chairman. Those of you who know me, I am Mr. Lovely. I'm over here at Warrenton Middle School. I've been the band director there for the past nine years. And in those nine years, I've drawn the program from zero to amazing. Yeah, I'll pat myself on the back for that, because I have to let you know that I have shown myself approved to my community, to my parents, and to my students. Just yesterday, I opened an envelope that garnered $500 for the Warrenton Middle School Band Program for participating in the Christmas Parade. We're the only marching middle school here in Escambia County. We march as our own unit. We make precedence everywhere we go. But unfortunately, Warrenton Middle School is always on the chopping block. And so what I'm asking tonight is for some type of action that is not always after the fact. So currently, we're in that position where we're either gonna be a charter, or we're closing. And as a person who represents the community, I go out into the community, and every day I go out, I hear a parent ask me what's happening, and I cannot give them an answer. I've been taught from a young age that if you don't have the answer, go find the answer. Here I am finding an answer. I've gone through Warrenton Middle School for the past nine years, I've gone up administration, I've been on the state level, I've talked to the Commission of Education about Warrenton Middle School. I've been given pretty words. But I've always been, also have been given diabolical actions. We have been systematically decomposing for the past nine years. I've seen Warrenton go up, and I've seen it go down. In those nine years, I've been told, wait, because we have a plan. Wait, because we're gonna try to do something different, we're gonna do something better. Well, listen, we've been in the, I've been there for nine years, and we still have two months of school left, and we have no decision. I can't tell a parent what is gonna happen. I cannot give guidance. I cannot stand there and represent Escambia County School District in a capacity where I know that we're gonna do better, because no decision has been made. I'm here asking for a concise plan, so that, one, we're not rushing at the very last minute, parents aren't stressed, and, two, we can actually treat this community better than it's been treated for the past, longer than I've been there. Every time you hear Warrenton in the news, it's nothing pleasant. They deserve more, they deserve better, and I'm asking for an answer. Thank you for your time.[732.82][732.82](applause).
Our next speaker, Russell Corp.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to address the vote we had last night. Concerning this vote, I applaud you guys for what you've done with the juvenile justice department in cooperation, trying to reduce juvenile crime. But at the same time, this vote that you had last night is gonna have exactly opposite response. Objecting our children to pornography, to racial indifference, and the... It just outrages me. I heard about this just today, just at lunchtime, and it's, it's just made my blood boil. I don't have any children myself, but I'm up here trying to make a point with you, to beg you to reconsider this vote. This is morally injustice to our children. God never intended our children to be subjected to sexual immorality, photographs, and books, and literature. It is a wrong way to raise our children. I'm here standing, trying to make a stand for our children. Not only that, I believe that this vote is in, in a direct violation of a state statute. Statute 847-012, Section A in particular, any picture, photograph, drawing, scripture, sculpture, motion picture, film, video cassette, or similar visual representation of an image of a person or portion of the human body which depicts nudity or sexual conduct, sexual excitement, sexual battery, bestiality, or sadomasochistic abuse, which is harmful to minors, is prohibited. And I just, I pray that you guys would do the right thing and reconsider this vote, and not allow these books in our children's libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[916.43][916.43](applause). Our next speaker will be Susan Martin, and after her is Larry Downs Jr.
Hello. My name is Susan Martin. I live in District 1. I'm here to voice my support for an appointed superintendent. An appointed superintendent allows us to choose someone with an educational background and experience, to understand the impact that their decisions make in the classroom, and our students, teachers, staff, and families. After observing divisiveness of last night's meeting, I'm very concerned that an elected superintendent may produce a superintendent with partisan interests, and perhaps not understanding the difference between church and state. I'm passionate about education. I served as a school counselor in Santa Rosa County for 15 years. I currently serve as an academic advisor at the University of West Florida. I serve those students seeking to become teachers. These are challenging times in education, and I ask that you please do not vote for an elected superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.[993.82][993.82](applause). Larry Downs Jr., and next would be Willard Lindhart. Larry has six minutes, three donated from Gary. All right, thank you, Gary.
Oh, I didn't know this was a cordless mic. Oh, I can take it off. All right, I brought some books today. All right, of course, later on, I'm gonna speak on the referendum. I hope y'all vote to put it back on the people, but I'll speak more about that, on that agenda item. The books that y'all voted, you know, you did a little bit of a concession. You know, you moved, I think, one of them up from elementary school to junior high and high school, and then went from junior high to high school. Those books, I read a little bit more on them today. They just don't have no place. I would like for y'all to change the criteria for the committee that approves these books, you know, to be assigned, or checked out, or, you know, because anything in a library, I'm pretty sure the teachers can give them assignments. I've actually got one here that was given to one of my boxing students who's 15 years old. And I think that'd be worth reading. I was just about to tell you his name, but I'll hold up on that. There, there we go. All right, now, the reason why, I see, these can be used for anything. Now, this here was about probably four months ago. This is the essays, assignments that this teacher wanted. She listed them A, B, C, and D. Should trans people be allowed to compete in sports with the gender in which they identify? This is from Escambia High School. B, is it ever fair for minorities to receive special treatment or consideration? See, when it comes to government monitoring, which is more important, individual privacy or national security? Y'all see how that kinda indoctrinates these kids into becoming, you know, hey, if you got nothing to hide, it's just a little bit of a, it's just another step, just a little step. National security, like the paper I have, it said, from the USA Today, it said, when should liberty yield to public good? That's more propaganda, more, you know, indoctrination, just a little at a time, that's, you know, subconscious stuff. So anyways, I could go on. There's more. Hold it. Oh, should the Escambia County School Board be able to pull books off the shelves of high school classrooms and libraries? See the link. See, so she was already doing the research for y'all, four or five months ago. So anyways, I wanna make a recommendation for a book to be provided. If you could, turn that, turn off your phones and your devices, please. So anyways, here's one book that y'all could give to the high school students. It's COVID-19 and the Global Predators. COVID-19 and the Global Predators. This is a good book to read, you know? This is how you get magic juice shots put in, five, quick. Mark Levine, Mark Levine, this is a good one. American Marxism. Yeah, let's go ahead and get them to reading good stuff, you know, stuff that's more accurate, instead of this softball stuff. My buddy Jimmy Trotter, which I, you know, we're good friends, I like him. He wrote this book, Eradicating Racism. What y'all did last night, what I heard most of the people come up here and say, not most, but probably the majority, we live in a systemic racist society. And that can't be let go. I get it, you know, policies, programs, departments, such as this one, it thrives on it. Seven committee, you know, seven committees, I gotta be on seven committees. That's all power, that's all influence. That's why certain people strive to get put on those committees. You get the appropriate funds, you get to make contacts, all that stuff. But I read through this book, and as you can see here, I put Post-it notes in it, all through it. And what I told Jimmy was, I said, you know, you should change this book from Eradicating Racism, you need to change the name, to Cultivating Racism. That's what I get out of this. I've got no problem with skin tone, gender, gender identity, gender curious, or gender confused, I don't care. But when you're putting this on little children, you're planting a little seeds, that's what's happening. And whenever you're bringing people from out of state to put into positions, we don't have nobody to depend on right now for those places, for those positions being filled by people who share this type of stuff. And that's a lot of money, that those people who are selling that propaganda, if they can get these school systems to put them in their libraries and their classrooms. And one of those teachers last night, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, said that she bought, like, three books of these ones that were on the list, and that whenever y'all sent out the email or whatever, the notification, she said in here, I had to pull it out of one of my students' hands. So that tells me that it's not just in the library. If y'all give it okay to be in the library, it's okay to be in her hands, and to hand it to the students, her, him, whoever. Sir, what is it? What's the pronouns? Change your criteria.[1382.72][1382.72](noise).
Our next speaker, Willard Lindhart. And last will be Kimberly Krupa.
Good evening. My name is Willard Lindhart. I have a son that goes to Warrenton Middle School. And kinda with Mr. Lovely back there, don't know what's gonna happen with the school, but what I do know is that the school is in disarray. It starts with, first thing in the morning, there's speeders that drive through the school zones, pay no attention. Where's the cops? Where's the cops to control this? Where's a bigger speed limit sign out there to alert these drivers that are going 50 and 60 mile an hour through this speed zone? I don't understand how the school board doesn't care about, and order starts at the very beginning of the day. And when you've got disrespect from the street on up into the, to the parking lot, where the kids are walking all through the cars with no respect whatsoever for the vehicles that are in, that are driving and dropping off kids, they're wandering through the parking lots, they don't care if a car's moving, they're not being instructed by the school to, you know, watch out for the vehicles, they don't care. When, what's it gonna take, a child to get hit for there to be ordered in the parking lot? Once you get ordered, once you get cops out there in front of that school, and you get cops in the doggone parking lot, and you get kids out of the parking lot from wandering from place to place, riding bicycles, riding wheelies in the parking lot, where the parents pick up the students and drop them off, you get ordered in that parking lot, and you'll start getting ordered inside the school, and then you'll start getting ordered within, inside the school, and it'll become a better school. But it has to start at the very beginning of the day, outside of the school, all the way into the entrance of the school. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.[1503.66][1503.66](applause).
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman. I am Kimberly Krupa, speaking today as a parent. I've got four children, three are school age in the public school system here in this county, and one will be in kindergarten in 2025. I was fortunate enough to be a parent representative, who served on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the superintendent search back in 2020. I was pregnant, it goes by fast. I want to attest to the need for keeping the appointed superintendent model. During the search process for the current superintendent, I learned that many communities in Florida moved away from an elected superintendent in the 1960s, and for good reason. Districts across the state were losing accreditation. Today, 98% of school districts in the U.S. have an appointed superintendent. If we were to make the superintendent elected again, then we must face the significant issues that come from this very bad idea. An elected superintendent would create opportunities for money and politics to corrupt the education system. Elected superintendents risk harming school quality, because it minimizes both the number of qualified candidates and the likelihood of a strong match with you all, the school board. For example, a contender for elected superintendent must be a resident of the county, which automatically narrows the field of qualified candidates. Residency requirements exclude candidates. A point I'd like to make is that voters already have a say in our school district through our school board elections. Right now, our superintendent is appointed by an elected body, our five-member school board, which has elections every two years, and allows voters to weigh in on the direction of the district, including who becomes superintendent. The current system of selecting our superintendent is one I was very fortunate to participate in, and I'm grateful for that. The school board conducts a nationwide interview process, obtains citizen input, almost a year of it, and eventually appoints the person that they believe will do the best job. This is what we need. In every level of government, we have many officials who are appointed in order to ensure the holder has the requisite level of expertise. You, as our school board members, are the elected officials who pick our superintendent, so that people do have a say. If people want a superintendent that is a strong advocate for public schools, then they can vote for an activist school board. The superintendent should be focused on the students, I brought one with me, not the electorate. Educators are the ones on the front lines of education, they see what our children need every day, what they need and deserve. Let's side with the educators, let's side with the students, let's ensure our children are led by qualified administrators. For these reasons, I ask you to vote against the resolution, seeking to put this back on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That was our last speaker in public forum. The other people who've signed up to speak have chosen to do so on the agenda item later in the meeting. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion on Item A, the February 20th, 2023 minutes?
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next is Item B, February 20th.
That was the last speaker in public forum. The other people who've signed up to speak have chosen to do so on the agenda item later in the meeting. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion on Item A, the February 20th, 2023 minutes?
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next is Item B, February 20th, special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move the approval of February 20th, special meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We have motion and seconded. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next is Item C, the minutes from the February 21st meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. I second.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. There's no unfinished business, administrative appointments, proposed additions, revisions, or first reading, no items requiring public hearing. And now we'll go on to the consent agenda. Next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Or do we need to vote?
No, no, we pull first.
Okay. Any items to be pulled?
Yes, Mr. Chair. P, summer reading program for K-12.
Mr. Adams. Twenty-four K.
P, I think.
Twenty-four P, Mr. Adams.
What was that number again, 24?
Twenty-four P.
Still have one, which is minus 33A.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
May to pull Item 24K.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. Item 24K is pulled by Mr. Slaton.
And I wish to pull 33A for comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower, 33A.
33A.
33A. The exemption from the Willie Glenn Act.
Okay. Please vote on the consent agenda minus the pulled items.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll go to the pulled items.
Would you like a motion on 24K?
Yes.
I move the approval of 24K. The award for à la carte snack items and beverages for direct delivery.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I will not be voting on this item due to the fact that I have a family member that is an employee of one of the vendors.
Thank you, Mr. Slaton. And I know that you've done the necessary paperwork with Ms. Buswell.
Yes.
With the rest of the, any other discussion from other board members? If not, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. Can I have a motion on 24P?
I would like to move the approval of Item 24P, summer reading books for K-12 students.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The reason why I pulled this item, because I was able to listen to how they vetted these books for the summer, and I was hoping the superintendent could tell the public what went in to vet the books, make sure we're in compliance with all laws. So no inappropriate material. So I don't know if you want to do it, or your staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Adams. I'm going to have Ms. White come and give us those details.
The books were selected using professional reviews, following our district policy, following state guidance or the DOE training. And then that list has been narrowed down and shared with the schools with the reviews. And now they are selecting the titles they wish to have at their schools. And then they are presented to their library advisory council for final input, just as we would for any book that we add to our library collections.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. White. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote on 24P.
Motion carries five zero.
Public forum's over. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Okay, well, I don't know. It's in the discussion. We talked about pulling items for...
You have to have it here before we get to consent agenda, is what it says in your script.
So... We said that anyone who wanted to speak on the forum or to the items had to have the form turned in prior to the adoption of the consent agenda, which we are now in. So we've already adopted and done it, and it's too late to turn anything in. There's a request to speak.
Would you like a motion on?
I will. Thirty-three A.
I move that we approve 33A, the exemption from this Willie Anne Glenn.
I second the motion.
And, Mr. Chair, I pulled it because I, every year, we get to a point in the summer where we get calls from people saying, I understand that we're not serving children in the summer. So I was hoping that we could go ahead and discuss that now and explain how the program works for the summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Hightower. The Willie Glenn Act is the overarching statute that provides districts the ability to feed students over the summer months. We do that in this district using both provisions of this act and National School Lunch Program for those schools that we operate summer schools in. So we partner with an exceptional partner feeding the Gulf Coast. They manage sites that serve all of our elementary schools that are not being served by our food service for summer school. The reason for the exemption is there are certain provisions in that statute that we must abide by in order to avail ourselves of the program. If we are not in compliance with any of those, we must file an exemption. In this case, we have one elementary school on the extreme north end of the county that has a serving site that exceeds the 10-mile standard. It is 10.4 miles from that school.
Any questions? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
We are now down to number 40. It's the resolution for elected superintendent. I have referendum. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
I'll move that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I will second for discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Well, we're going to wait. First, we're going to have public forum on this item. Our first speaker on this item will be Skip Butler, who will have nine minutes. I need to see Alvin Potts, please raise your hand. Mr. Potts was donating time. Mr. Pott, okay. And also Karen Butler. Okay, thank you. So you'll have nine minutes, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have two issues, appointed versus elected, and then the question of, when you, as a board, were commissioned to make this appointment, did you hire the right guy? And we'll table that for now. I will comment, though, that in my business, I too have hired the wrong guy in the past. Certainly wasn't intentional. I had to deal with it. And we move on. I will... I will say that in terms of where we are now, God in His infant wisdom gave our founding fathers insight far beyond. So unfortunately, we're grateful for that. Otherwise, Northeast and West Coast would be determining the outcome of every national election. So we have a representative form of government, a republic, and certainly we're grateful for that. You are our representatives. Now, there's some issues with that because we have, as voters, we get to participate in 20% of the election of this board with no at-large seat. That's where we are. Reference to the position of the superintendent of schools, I'll liken that unto Mayor Pinzco or the mayor, I see Mayor Reeves is here. The same debate is taking place all over the country in terms of a strong mayor system being an elected mayor versus a weak mayor system or an appointed mayor. I think both of those are aptly named, no question. We, in going forward, why, I would pose the question, why would the strong mayor system be so prevalent? And the simple answer is, if you're going to hire a man to do a job, you got to give him the authority to do the job. You're hiring a guy for a job, there's a checklist of things that you want to see. Certainly, you want integrity, and you want leadership, want experience, although I would caution that experience would be assessed in terms of achievement. You're going to look at education. Now, I don't care how many letters you put behind a man's name, I don't care if he checks all the boxes. If he doesn't know and understand this district, and he doesn't know and understand this community, he can't effectively lead. That happened. And I would say that, I'm not saying we can't learn things from, you know, from other areas, but if you're going to bring a guy in here that wants to do things like to do in New York or do in Miami, or do in Delaware or Orlando, it's not going to happen, it's not going to work, it's just not going to be effective. If you take issue with that, then I would ask you, why is it a prerequisite that you live in the district that you represent? You know, I would say, that's pretty simple. The argument I hear for an appointed superintendent is, well, we get a wider range of more qualified candidates. Well, I would ask one, first off, to define qualified. But secondly, I would ask you, would we get a wider range of qualified candidates if they didn't have to live in your district? Well, I'll tell you, I wouldn't want somebody that didn't live in my district, because I want somebody that knows my district and knows the people of my district. Now, I'm not telling you that somebody can't come in and be an effective leader. In fact, my good friend Wilson Robertson I see out here, he very diligently and effectively served the citizens of District Five for a number of years, and then he moved into District One, or the citizens of District One from there. Well, why did that happen? Because he knew them, and because they knew and trusted him. So I wouldn't want somebody outside of the district in terms of that. You can have a man that may know the district and may check those boxes, but he has to have the authority to do the job. You know, I tell young coaches all the time, young man gets his first high school job, and I tell him, man, what an awesome calling. You get an opportunity to be in such an influential position, to leave indelible and lasting impressions and leave marks on young people that they'll carry with them the rest of their life. But I make sure he understands that in order for him to be able to continue that opportunity, he's got to win. Because if he doesn't win, it's next man up. And that's the way it should be, because we're, you know, we're to teach our young people, teach our kids that they are to succeed, to thrive, to excel, to win. So that would be the expectation. But the difference is, when we compete between lines, everybody's looking at the same scoreboard. When you got an appointed superintendent, it's a little different. It's easy for him to get distracted from the main thing, from the main scoreboard. Because in order for him, and he knows, for him to keep the opportunity, no matter how passionate he is about his job, for him to keep that opportunity, he has to be on the same page with three votes, three votes. So I would ask you, and I'll leave you with this, do you trust the citizens of Escambia County? If you do, give the voice back. If you don't, I'll remind you, they're the same people that elected you.
Our next speaker is Mickey Price. After that will be Wilson Robertson.
Chairman, board members. I'm Mickey Price. I'm a member of Marcus Point Baptist Church and a member of Micah 6:8. Your job is not easy. I ran for school board myself one time. I remember two things my opponent, Elmer Jenkins, said. His picture's right up there. And I'll never forget them. First, you need to have the finger on the pulse of the community. Secondly, you need to count to three. And that's exactly what's taking place in our board right now. How true is that? Nothing happens until three board members agree. What I don't agree with is when three people can dictate who our superintendent is. This is the voters of Escambia County's responsibility. I watched online last night the special meeting about the books. This debate was hard to watch because it was so political. When I was in school, I never knew what my teacher's political association was, Republican or Democratic. Let's protect and educate our children. Our children need to be innocent as long as possible. I have a middle school student at Brown Barge at orientation. Her teacher's political views were all over the classroom. This doesn't need to happen. And it wasn't a picture of Trump. This is why we need an elected superintendent by the people and voted out by the people, if necessary. A superintendent elected from our community, someone who we grew up with, someone we went to church with, someone whose kids played sports at local parks, like Brent, Myrtle Grove, Warrington, and so on. Anybody remember Brent? I mean, that's where we all grew up. That's where we learned right from wrong in a lot of different cases. Let's correct a mistake and put the power back into the hands of the people. We have always had great candidates in the past. I urge you to do the next right thing and vote for an elected superintendent.
Wilson Robertson. Next will be Stacy Rising.
Thank you. Before I make my few simple remarks, as mentioned, I did have served the public for 20 years. And you that have been here a long time know, I've never come before this board or any other elected board and suggested how you run your school board, or how you vote, or how you do whatever you do. But since I retired eight years ago, I feel like I'm part of the public, and I can do that now. In my 20-year serving, I never failed, never failed to vote yes for a referendum. I was not going to deny the public a chance to vote. So I suggest that you remember that and think about the public, not just for school board members, letting us have a voice into the superintendent. It worked for a long time. And it barely passed, but we gave up our right to vote for a school superintendent. And I think that was a big mistake. And I think the current Board of County Commissioners will do just like I used to do. I think they will vote to approve putting it on a referendum. You get it to them, they will vote to approve it to go to an election next year. I'm confident in that. And as I said, in that 20 years, I have never, that I can recall, said... said to the public, you're not gonna get a right to vote. So, don't deny the referendum. Please vote for it. Let us have a chance to, I think, correct something that barely passed. We made a mistake, I think, as an electorate. There was a lot of pressure, a lot of money spent, and yet it still barely passed. So, give us one more chance. If the public thinks it's still good, if they think it's working, they'll vote for it again. If not, they won't, and we'll go back to an elected superintendent. So, please vote for the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Rising. After her will be Neil McDonald.
There was a time when Wilson wanted me to run for school board. Um, my name is Stacy Rising, and I'm a former Escambia County school teacher and a parent of three from the school district. I'm here tonight to express the issue of the appointed superintendent versus an elected superintendent. First and foremost, the people need a say regarding who makes the decisions on the education of children in our schools. An appointed superintendent only has to answer to three board members. This appointed superintendent doesn't know the culture and values of our county. An appointed superintendent cannot be removed by a governor even if he commits an egregious act where an elected one can be removed. And if you've lived here long enough, you know that this has been an issue. An appointed superintendent will try to impose his worldviews on our children's education, which is happening with the proposed pronoun change in the student handbook. My last year of teaching, I dealt with this, and it was a nightmare. Proposed eliminating valedictorian and salutatorium for our seniors, which is absurd. Mandatory diversity training for all employees to watch critical race theory video, which is a theory, not a fact. The last time I checked, no one is teaching the creation theory. Graduation rates dropping in our state, in our county amongst the state, and hundreds of books with pornographic or obscene material in the library, of which we all heard about last night. And most importantly, um, while we keep those books in the library, the removal of the Bible to an adult section only. Thank you.
Neil, Neil McDonald. After him would be Aaron Schnare. Mr. McDonald, do you have time donated from Mary Lynn McDonald, please? And from Ronnie Southern? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and the school board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My wife and I have five sons who all graduated from various Escambia County high schools, Pine Forest, Tate, or West Florida High School, across the board. I voted against the referendum in 2018 to go to an appointed superintendent. I was actually very surprised that it passed, and I believe that it was a wrong decision, but I'm hopeful that tonight we can get that corrected and get this back on the ballot. I believe that decision is why we're in some of the predicaments we're in right now. I, so I went back to see what influenced the voters to vote for that elected superintendent. I'm sorry, for that appointed superintendent. And I find it funny that some people say that the elected position is much too political, which really is, to me, the opposite of that, really. And here's an excerpt of, from an article that appeared in the Pensacola News Journal a week before the election in 2018. And I'm reading from the article. It says, noting Escambia County's less than stellar ranking amongst, among Florida's sixty-seven school districts, D.C. Reeves, chairman of the Yes for Escambia Schools Political Committee, argues, "It is time for us to try something different." I quote, "We can't pretend that ranking fifty-three out of sixty-seven school districts doesn't matter," Reeves said. "Whether you are a parent who has a kid in our school system or whether you don't have kids, but you wanna see our community grow, this matters. The ref, this referendum could be the first domino to improve our school system," end quote. And ironically now, Escambia County is now sixtieth out of sixty-seven districts since that, since that happened. Another statement in the article says, "Proponents of, of, of selecting school superintendents of the, of the, um, of the, um, appointed superintendent argue that the new system would allow the school board members search nationwide for the most qualified candidate." You know, the surface, that sounds really good, you know? But a resume with a list of qualifications doesn't necessarily reflect a person's values. Our county is extremely conservative, and I believe that a vast majority of our citizens want a superintendent with not only great qualifications, but values that reflect ours. I wanna return to having an elected superintendent. And part of that reason is I believe that we've had some failed leadership from the superintendent and his staff. Here's an example. On August twenty-fourth of last year, the Northview teacher who exposed the majority of these disgusting and pornographic books that are in our school libraries had a meeting with the superintendent to discuss these books. He provided him with an entire notebook with excerpts from the books. He told him that this was urgent, especially the books with graphic materials, graphic pictures. No commitment from them at all. She emailed them several days later, received no response. Then on September eighth, she received an email from the superintendent that stated that the process was expensive and time-consuming, and that he had not found time to read the first two original library books. He also stated that he did not, that he did meet recently to look at other possibilities for our current situation, and I'm trying to figure out a way to add some form of a quicker solution to the matter. All I can say is, I guess that didn't happen, because I don't, we were here until one o'clock last night. We've gone through, what, seven books? He could've removed the seven books and saved lots of time, a lot of resources, and a lot of money. I know the board knows this, but I bet that some of the people in the audience don't realize that the teachers and district employees that serve on the review committee get paid for reading the books and attending the review committee meetings. Last night, I asked Michelle White if she could provide me an estimate for how much each one of those is. I know they vary, because sometimes you'll have five members, sometimes you'll have nine. She told me to call her, so I did. I called her this morning. She didn't answer. I called her, left her voicemail. I called her two or three more times, three more times, and then I called, she sent her voicemail to call the, her assistant, or call another lady. Well, she didn't even have a, um, voicemail set up. So, anyway, I had to just make the best estimate I could. With an accounting degree, I felt kinda, I could do that. But, I mean, even if I just say it's a few hundred dollars, that, and we know it's a little bit more than that. With all the books we've gotta do, we're talking, by the time this is all done, over fifty thousand dollars. There's no question about it. So, in my, in my opinion, the review committee process is at total farce, and it needs restructuring and better oversight. They have voted to keep every book so far. Yet the school board has totally removed three of the books and recommended that the other four have more restrictions than the committees recommended. Last night, there were several people who spoke on being on the committees. They were wearing red in support of keeping the pornographic books in the libraries. How's that being open-minded and partial? But the superintendent says that he believes the established system is working. Here's what the superintendent said about the current system. This was from an article from the PNJ that was made after the school board meeting, where the committees voted to keep the three books, and the school board voted to remove the three books. I quote, "I think that the board did a great job in taking in all the material, going over the book, listening to all the residents who spoke, then making a decision," Smith said. "I think they really made the process work as it was designated to work, or designed to work, and that's to take a deep look into the matter and make the best decision that was available." End, end quote. And if you think that the appointed superintendent issue is not political, you're wrong. The same article that I quoted from just then, from the superintendent, this actually, this article was on the front page of the Pensacola News Journal on March the fifth, front page. The headline read, "Escambia Schools, Grades C Significant Progress." I have read that article five times, and I'd encourage you to read it. You go to the front page of the, of the March fifth News Journal. And the only progress or improvement that was mentioned in that article was the number of D and F schools in the district that decreased under Dr. Smith's tenure, it said. And that's a good thing, obviously. But ironically, and they, they also mentioned in that graduation, uh, in that same article that the graduation weights, rates in Escambia County dropped significantly during his tenure. I emailed the two people who wrote the article to ask them why they titled such a long art, it was a two-page article, why they, why they titled it that, and, uh, with only one mention of improvements, and I've not received the response yet from them. I wanna see leadership that will make decisions that are best for our children and our entire district. As my wife stated last night, these kids can't get a driver's license until they're sixteen. They can't vote until they're eighteen, and they can't purchase alcohol until they're twenty-one. So, why would we expose them to pornography while they're still in school? We need to be spending our time and resources to teach our kids real education. We need to return to an elected superintendent so that the two-hundred-nineteen thousand registered voters in our county can select the best candidate by vetting them not just for their qualifications, but their values too. I think this needs to be in the hands of we, the people, and not just three people. Thank you.
Aaron Schnare, and after him is Pusheil Schnare.
Thank you all for having us today. Um, I think you all kinda know what I would say as far as the reason why uh, we should have a elected superintendent. Um, I'm still asking that you would, y'all would, uh, think about how quickly we can remove this superintendent. Um, but as far as the referendum goes, please go ahead and do it so we can right what was wronged. Um, that's all I have, so thank you.
Pusheil Schnare, and then Larry Downs Jr.
Thank you for having me. We were victims of bait and switch from the campaign promise. The hiring process is flawed. You can't have a committee of a few people select the best person for the job by reading hundreds or maybe even thousands of resumes. In two thousand and eighteen, the campaign promise was that an appointed superintendent would be better than an elected superintendent. The appointed superintendent was going to be someone who has the background and experience to turn the district around, someone who has the necessary ideas on how to move the district forward and the tools and concepts to solve the problems. That's what we were told would happen by going to an appointed superintendent. The whole reason that the, the school board would hire someone who would, was that someone would do a better job than the elected superintendent. The, the entire reason to go to an appointed superintendent was that an appointed superintendent would do a better job than an elected superintendent. We haven't seen any new concepts or ideas to solve any problems. In one of the meetings, the superintendent himself admitted that he doesn't have the answers. We have the lowest graduation rate in the history of Escambia County and the surrounding counties. Not just Escambia County, it's the lowest graduation rate in, in the surrounding counties. Not only the lowest graduation rate in history, but it's like three standard deviations below the means. I mean, it's, it's low. School violence is so bad that the county commissioner and state house representative held a conference and made the local news discussing fixing the school district themselves. So, the county commissioner and the state house representative, who campaigned so strong to go to appointed, are now thinking of ways themselves that they can do his job for him. So, I mean, what does that tell you? When, when the people who campaigned to go to the appointed are now the ones coming up with the ideas to fix it, tells you the guy you brought in to fix the problems isn't fixing the problems. The model failed. The experiment to go to appointed isn't working in this district. We were told what would happen. What we were told would happen hasn't happened. We want a superintendent who works for the voters, not the school board. I'm asking for a motion and a vote for a referendum to go back to an elected superintendent. Thank you.
Larry, Larry Downs Jr., and then Joseph Meehan.
All right, uh, Larry Downs Jr. Wilson said, uh, let us vote. Let us. Isn't that sad that we gotta come before our elected? Beg? Man, it sounds very, I mean, it's, 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 it's close. It's getting close. It's silly. We just, uh, we, we're telling you, we wanna go back to a vote. So, let's make it happen. A superintendent is not beholden to the citizens. He is beholden to three of y'all, three of the board members. That's what he's beholding to, or beholden to. So, you know, that's not, uh, and, and friends and members, you know? You just become friends, and then associates. You know, D.C. Reeves, Quentin Stouter, they're like this. I got, I got an hour, two hours of video whenever they swore in, swore in D.C. Reeves. They're, they're tight. Oh, Jeff, Jeff Pogash, Lumen May, they all, we need to do this, we need to go. Fooled every, I mean, not fooled everybody, fooled a, what, what was it? Just a couple of percent? But, you know, so half, half the people were not fooled, but just that little bit over. So, anyways, let's go back to, uh, to that. Then we won't have these problems with the four books from last night, you know, and the, and the other books. And, uh, who knows what's gonna come up? I mean, if we can't, if, if the superintendent cannot understand that if we can't read words, paragraphs, and chapters out of the books that y'all are presenting to our children, if we can't read those right here at this podium, that is a problem. Can't, am I the only one that can see this problem? If you can't read the book here because it's too vulgar, how can you say it's okay for children? I, I'm, it's, it's just, it's mind-blowing. You know, so, I'm just pointing out the obvious. Sometimes it's a little bit, you know, a little bit passionate, you know? You could call it angry, not really. Sometimes it's, it's, it's comedy. It's just comedic because it's so obvious that all you can really do is laugh. You know, laugh or get sick at your stomach. But the, but what we seen last night was y'all influenced by a mob of woke individuals who think that this smug is okay for children, but it's not okay for us to hear in this room. We can't read it. Chair, you say, huh, 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 no, uh, don't say that. Don't read that book. That's just silliness. Anyways, there's a lot of good friends. Uh, missionobvious.com, that's where I post my stuff. Just pointing out the obvious.
Joseph Meehan, and then David Trombley.
Thank you for letting me speak again. Uh, I always hate following him. He has the coolest hat, and I don't have a hat. I apologize. Uh, four points I wanna make real quick toward the superintendent election process. Uh, I believe in election, an elected superintendent is accountable to the community. He has to get before them, before them, like to say, I will do this, I will improve funding, I will do this, improve grades for the students, and he has to say how he's gonna do it, and the community can make that decision. I believe our community is old enough to make that decision. Uh, second point to make, an appointed superintendent, as has been pointed out, is uh, I, I basically only has to have three board members. And someone here said, if we wanted an extremist, we can all vote extreme board members in. That's the problem. We can all vote extreme board members in, and we'll have an extremist superintendent. But the idea is, we can vote for a superintendent, and we would probably vote for somebody in our community, just like I voted for Kevin, because we want people in our community who represent us, and I think the superintendent should be in that kind of a position. Um, regardless of how you feel, I agree with Mr. Robertson there about give the people the chance to vote. Please. Uh, my last point, and it's not meant as any kind of a slam or anything, but I've actually been in a community where the board members were relatively new, and they could end up electing the wrong person, or when they do the processes, they're still learning as a board. And I was in one community where basically the board had not approved the performance appraisal for their superintendent until two months before his first year was up. And now, I'm a manager. You do the performance appraisal before you bring the guy on. Say, this is what you have to do over the next twelve months. And after twelve months, you evaluate, did he meet these goals? Did he meet these objectives? Did he accomplish these, whatever it happened to be in that form? Yet this board that had done this, they're also the ones who elected that superintendent to fill the spot. And I just sort of feel that, you know, not as a slam against that board, but when you're a newly elected member, I guarantee every one of you felt like, oh, jeez, I'm in deep here. I gotta learn everything I need to know about this job. And the first thing you do is walk in, oh, elect a superintendent. You know, not to say that this board is bad in doing that process, but the idea is, what is the expertise of four, or just in this case, three, board members to elect a superintendent over a community of how many hundred thousand people? I would rather put my faith in the people. And as Mr. Robertson said, let's give the people the chance, 'cause there was a lot of false information put out in the papers about this process. information put out in the papers about this process to go to an appointed superintendent. And I feel myself, I actually voted against it, but a lot of friends I had voted for it because they thought it would make the community better, and we'd have higher grades, and we have students graduate numbers going up, and none of that's happened. So, anyway, thank you very much, appreciate it.
David Trombley, followed by Teresa Crainey. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Trombley will have six minutes.
It'll be nine.
Okay, no, you're right. Mike Kearns, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, as a veteran in a community with a large veteran population, it's an honor to speak with you tonight and share a military perspective. The challenge before us may seem to be an Escambia County issue and a decision that only impacts our county. However, to fully grasp the gravity of the challenging decision before you tonight, please allow me to broaden the aperture and look outside our borders for nine minutes. Good evening, my name is David Trombley, and I once called Boston home before leaving for college and military service, but have called Pensacola home for more than 30 years since arriving here as a young flight student. I'm a father of six, two of which are born here at Navy Hospital Pensacola, and am now a retired Marine Lieutenant Colonel, and still proudly serving as a federal contractor on our local military bases, training young Navy, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard students in the classroom and the simulators. I've been teaching military classrooms since 2001, when I was grounded after being diagnosed with a rare bone cancer. In a single day, I went from flying F-18s, having my childhood dream and passion ripped away from me with a rare disease that no one else had beat at that time. I was given a two-year death sentence, and I asked the Marine Corps to send me back to Pensacola to teach in the NAS Pensacola classrooms, where I'd been trained. My wife, Megan, and I searched for a natural cure for a disease that had not been beat, and we knew that even if we didn't find my cure, my last two years of service would be well spent motivating and inspiring the next generation of leaders until I could no longer stand. By the grace of God and the efforts of my wife, who researched throughout the nights, we found our miracle cure, and eventually I was reinstated to flying and served another 18 years. However, those two years of teaching turned into more than two decades in the classroom, and my passion still burns to both mentor and teach warriors. I realized very quickly what the scripture, James 3:1, meant as a new instructor looking into those eager eyes of faces only a few years younger than mine. "My brethren, be not many masters, knowing that we shall receive a greater condemnation." If you're not familiar with the Old King James, let me rephrase. Teachers, you have a greater responsibility than many other professions, and you will be held responsible for how you lead, mentor, and mold your students. Truly, the front of a classroom is a dangerous place if you're not teaching truth. The front of a boardroom holds equal, if not more, eternal scrutiny, and I say that with the utmost respect for all of you in your positions. The classroom is more than whiteboards, smartboards, and laptops with a proctor transferring facts, figures, and historic dates. It is the fertile garden of growing thoughts and beliefs which will forge the next generation of government leaders and military leaders. Our local, state, national military leaders need to first be formed and molded to think like Americans, as citizens, as neighbors, and as men and women that they were created to be by God. Like many military members present tonight, as well as others living in the counties, in Florida counties to our east, we choose to serve and retire here so we could raise our children in these school districts and attend churches that teach truth which have not been culturally watered down. We choose to live in communities where we could trust our neighbors, knowing we held the same moral beliefs. We trusted men and women to uphold those values in the places that mattered most, on school boards and in the classroom. We still trust our neighbors to do so, and tonight respectfully request that you give that right and responsibility back to us, the parents and citizens, to choose who leads our school district. We ask that you allow us to once again hold Escambia County leaders accountable for their decisions by the power of the vote. The unelected who have chosen to put forth pornographic, deeply scarring materials in front of our children must be and have been called out and even admonished to step down by some local government representatives. I wish to publicly thank Michelle Salzman for doing so and representing us and our children well. We all know it could, but I had prayed that it would never happen here. Make no mistake about it, the end state is more of what we see cascading across the country from failed California banks and a culture of death if we do not stand up and make a change in our county. We have seen banks place sexual theory before financial responsibility to investors. We've seen generals place pronouns before warfighting prowess. We have elected officials who have placed personal gain before personal and civic responsibility. These agendas are no longer trickling but pouring down on us from DC in the form of failed woke ideologies that champion immoral agendas rather than servant leadership, which our founding fathers found in scripture and lived out, sacrificing everything to birth our nation. We must do more than complain about the shifting sands of change that are remolding America. We must draw a line in the sand on Escambia County's border tonight. No longer will we accept the agenda from DC, Cali, Orlando, or South Florida. We know what we believe, we know what we must do, we must give the power back to the parents and the citizens of Escambia County to govern our school board, because you have failed to govern yourselves by appointing a superintendent who allows our county to fall prey to these horrific agendas. It seems it was not a question of if, but when these philosophies would trickle into our classrooms and our corporate and county boards, but now it is a question of how. How long will we sit idly by and allow leaders of tomorrow, our sons and daughters, and for many in here, our grandchildren, to not only be exposed but bullied by these immoral and destructive worldviews? As a retired Marine with 25 years of uniformed service, and now four years as a federal contractor on our local bases, I can see firsthand what our future holds as these agendas reach up and out of the classrooms and in the execution phase of government and military organizations alike. Our Secretary of Defense, Secretary of the Army, Air Force, the CNO, the Commandant, they all seem more concerned about establishing political indoctrination than funding and resourcing the necessary infrastructure to win wars and protect our borders and skies. It's almost too late, but not yet. Fifty years ago this week, our nation was scarred by a massacre perpetrated on a Vietnamese village called Mi Lai. A young Army commander delivered an unlawful order which his soldiers obeyed, slaying over 500 innocent people. That massacre was only halted by other American soldiers who landed in the village and placed themselves in harm way between themselves, their fellow American soldiers, and the innocent Vietnamese women and children. Those morally courageous warriors demanded an end to the illegal and immoral killing. In 2023, we have only to look back over the past 18 months to recognize another evil perpetrated by military leadership, not on foreign people overseas, but against our own warriors by the generals and admirals and the Secretary of Defense himself. Just as the evil in the village of Mi Lai was halted by a few brave warriors that day, so too the religious persecution within our military ranks during the pandemic is significantly was reduced by a few brave congressmen and the hundreds of uniform-wearing warriors from all branches of service. They spoke out, sacrificing their military careers in order to boldly convey the illegality of the religious persecution that was brought to bear on our warrior class. We had 13 such Marines in this community that stood tall and made sacrifice when hundreds of others didn't, and I'm deeply impressed and inspired and have thanked each one of these brave Marines. The question I ask is, where does such men and women come from who have the moral fiber to risk all and do what is right? They come from homes that instill their children with the morality to know right and wrong in school districts whose teachers reinforce these values along with critical thinking skills to empower our future leaders. In my classroom at Whiting Field, I have been blessed year in and year out to have local students from Escambia and Santa Rosa County who have demonstrated outstanding academic ability in our military and aviation studies because they received a solid foundation in our local school system. But even more than that, these panhandled natives who leave us and return as young military leaders have stood out in areas of moral and servant leadership. Tonight, that track record is in peril. Please do not allow that sterling record to end with this current generation. Please vote to return in electoral process that allows the people and parents of this county to choose our next superintendent so we can avoid arguing year after year to purge our schools one book at a time while dozens more flood into our libraries, poisoning our future leaders, leaving them battered, morally abused, and emotionally ill-equipped to lead us forward. Please vote tonight to give us the ability to choose a leader we in this county want to hold the reins as we send our greatest treasure, our educated children, out into the world, that they may return to us as community leaders and military leaders for our local bases and bases around the globe that serve to keep us and all Americans safe. These leaders need not be crippled emotionally or morally by the current wind of evil, but instead be empowered to call out the evil our current political and military leadership embraces. Our children must be afforded an academic environment that will instill in them the emotional, academic, and moral compass to keep us the shining city on the hill that we once were and we can become once again. Thank you for your time.
Rich Holtsnack, followed by Raya Prabhat. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it is donated. So, Rich, yeah, Rich has six minutes.
Thank you, sir. And we've heard from some extraordinary people tonight, and I add a hearty amen to what the good Colonel just said, my friend Skip Butler, Stacy Rising. We've got some really smart people in this room. And I've been a single parent here in the Escambia County School District for the last 18 years. I have four children. When I first arrived, they were under the age of five and had an extraordinary experience, all four of them at one time at Sinek Heights Elementary School. There were some teachers that changed their lives, no question. And this continued all the way up into middle school and all the way up into high school. I see Dr. Roberts back there, extraordinary principal at Booker T. Washington High School when he was there. But if I've learned anything from my last two school board meetings is that there can be a huge disconnect between unelected officials, unelected persons, and the worldview of the community, or the, there's a disconnect between the spirit of the community and some of these unelected officials. And I think the, as a case in point, the School Book Review Committee, unelected persons appointed by an unelected superintendent, revealed in very dramatic fashion that you can have these unelected people pushing for the inclusion of pretty much any book that's out there. You know, it'll be included in the library, and then we have to go through this ridiculous fight. We, I mean, many of us were here this morning, this morning, 1:30 in the morning, we were here this morning, battling over four books like we had done a couple of weeks prior, battling over three books. So there's a disconnect. We need to take it back. There's a better way to do it, and we need some leadership. We got a clash of worldviews that was obvious here in the room the last couple of times, and I'm frankly tired. As much as I love many of the teachers here in the community, they're my friends, I am not going to subordinate my responsibility as a father to some professionals, skilled professionals. No, these children belong to us, we love them, they're our greatest treasure. We want to be heard as parents, we're big stakeholders as to who's running the show. And frankly, the way I look at it, this clash of worldviews is, it's so broad right now. Yeah, we're seeing it here in education, but we're seeing it in the political realm, we're seeing it everywhere, everywhere, and we need to take it back. I am seeing more now than I ever had, the importance of involvement at the local level. You folks up there have done a very good job. Based on the last couple of meetings I've been to, you've gotten things right by and large, but I think back, one of my favorite shows on TV is Gunsmoke. About every sixth or seventh episode, there's a corrupt town because there's a corrupt sheriff who is owned by some corrupt person, and the citizens have to rise up and take on that corrupt system, okay? I like Gunsmoke because in every episode, somebody that needs a beating gets it, somebody that needs to be killed gets killed, and everything is fixed, but, and justice and righteousness prevail. I like justice and righteousness. I'm a military guy too, like these guys. We need to get back to the basics, teaching our kids basic things so they can read, they can write, and so they can think critically, think critically. We're not getting that right now. We bought this agenda, and I hate to use the word, this woke agenda, I'm so sick of it. Teach our kids, teach them. They're on loan to you, they're on loan to you, but we don't want the indoctrinated, we want them taught, okay? So they're on loan to you. You're elected, the possibility with this, you know, the Gunsmoke analogy again is, I don't have a problem with any of you personally, I don't know you really, I don't know you, sir, I don't know any of you personally. But there's the potential for powerful people to exert an inordinate amount of influence in the education of our children. We don't want that. We don't want that. It would be better if we went back to the basics, we elect you as school board members. I believe it would be better to go back to the direct election of the superintendent because it's very difficult for you, it's a very difficult thing for you to have to select somebody on the basis of a resume which may look extraordinary but doesn't reveal things like character, integrity, and this is not a bash against you, sir, I'm not, I'm just, this is just in general terms, and worldview, and worldview. This is a conservative area in Florida. We're conservative here, we have the largest per capita population of vets, we're conservative here. And right now, there is a disconnect between the education of our children, our unelected officials, and the community at large. We need to go back to the direct election of the school superintendent. Thank you.
Our last speaker tonight will have six minutes. That's Mayor D.C. Reeves, and he has time donated from Alex Smith.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for having me because I don't get an opportunity to be here in my own meetings. I want to thank, I am a public school dad and want to thank all the teachers and administration staff that work hard every day to certainly educate our students. So I just, I don't get this opportunity often, so I want to start with that. But first, the positive, I want to applaud the leadership here that has taken seriously what the voters elected them to do, to be leaders, and what those same voters asked for four years ago, which is the chance for their elected officials to hire the most qualified superintendent for our schools. I appreciate their commitment, your commitment, not to political games, but to our children and to my child, to seeing that request through. I believe this conversation today and potential vote today is not built based on any specific metric. I feel like this is the political desire of Mr. Adams, as he has made well known since the day after the vote in 2018. I'll start with actual metrics we do know. Thanks to this board and its appointment, our superintendent and our amazing teachers, administration staff, our school district ranked 48 out of 67 counties in Florida. That's the highest ranking in almost a decade and an improvement over our last ranking of 53. Obviously, we had a year without, but the last ranking in our elected format was 53. We also know that the number in DNF schools have been cut by more than half for the first year of measure for the current superintendent. And not one category in your five evaluations, or at least the last five evaluations, Dr. Smith, had one category that was marked needs improvement from your evaluation. I believe Mr. Adams wrote in Dr. Smith's 2022 evaluation that our superintendent has done an excellent job of representing the district and advocating at local and state level for our public education requirements. My concern is that we're here tonight because of political motives, so we can talk politics for a second. Somehow, this is a red versus blue issue, and I just believe that's inaccurate. If, and I'll put it this way, if wanting to elect, if we wanted to have an elected superintendent to somehow a more Republican thing, then I'd just ask, why does Texas not do it? Why does Wyoming not do it? Why didn't the state of Mississippi less than 10 years ago outlaw it? There are two states in this union, pick Republican or Democrat, anything you want, only two states, 48, do not allow this to be a practice in their state. There are, why is there 14,000 counties in the United States? What is different? With 14,000 counties in the United States, we have less than 80 who even allow an elected superintendent. So I don't know how that's a 50/50 issue, it doesn't sound like that to me. It sounds like a 99, actually, 99.5% issue. So, again, to stress, 14,000 counties, less than 80 in the United States of America, allow an elected superintendent, that is barely one-half of 1%. So you may ask, here I am, elected mayor, why would I be supportive of this? My job is politics. I was in Tallahassee yesterday, that's a big part of my job, is to advocate for amazing day-to-day technicians, the 850-plus people who work at the city of Pensacola. That's what I believe your job is at the school board. You're elected by your constituents to advocate for their wants and needs, and you do that. The superintendent is the technical expert. I have no plans on hoping that the city engineer is elected or the airport director is elected. Those are people that have expertise far greater than I could ever have about how they would operate their organization day to day. Neither job is in politics. Superintendent is here to execute on decades of expertise while ensuring our voting public is heard and represented. This, still, if this, if the opinion, excuse me, was a change is needed at superintendent, our voters, with their votes, empowered the five of you to have leadership and to be able to have that discussion and to make a change. Our citizens voted to give this board the actual authority to put items on the agenda, to make decisions about leadership, and to have the ability to hold the day-to-day operations accountable. No data suggests that after two years, and after giving an appointed superintendent a three-year contract, I would imagine that we all are not in agreement that two years would be enough to evaluate. What our county, there's no doubt- What our county, there's no data that suggests that after those two years, what our county voted for needs to change. Our city and our county voted to empower you not to run away from leadership. I hope this right is given to you, is taken seriously, and the desire of our parents for an appointed superintendent is taken seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Is there any discussion from board members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I wanted to give a little background on this. I would tell you, I was against appointed superintendent when we had the referendum. But, Mr. Wilson Robinson, I believe just as you, I have no fear of letting the people weigh in on, on a situation like this. I will never stop elected, one of our citizens from a referendum. And even though I thought going to a point it would bring us a lot of trouble, I was not going to stand there myself and say, no, you citizens can't have no input. Now, I don't know, there was 62,418 that voted yes, and there was 61,508 that voted no, it was a, oh, 910 vote difference, okay? And if it's going so wonderful, I don't see why to worry. I mean, I put this on because I, I met people I hadn't, didn't even know a couple of months ago, some backed the campaign, they all said, hey, we want to have that vote again. And I promised them during my campaign, I would fulfill that, fulfill that, okay? Because I'm not scared of letting the voters decide an issue. And you know, so this, this last referendum was cited by 0.74%. Now, this question's been called before, every four years it can be called, you know? It's been called in the past, and, and, appointed didn't win, every one of them but that last one. So, but anyway, I, I have no problem with this, I am going to stand beside the citizens of Skimby County, I think everybody should have a chance to weigh in, and I don't know which way it's going to go. But it, it is nothing about, I never even had in my mind about him because I'm going to do what the people ask me, okay? I don't even, I don't even know if he'll be there for four more years or two more years, but I will never stop a referendum, even if I don't think it should be done. I got to trust citizens of Skimby County.
Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
But, so, you hear some propaganda that was done in 2018? Florida is the unique state in the Union. We have 67 school districts, so when they come telling you all that stuff about other states, it ain't the same. We're the third most populous state, and we got 67 school districts countywide. It's, it's a big school district across the state of Florida. If we want to do it like Alabama, well, you probably would have the school district of North Skimby over there, and then you would have the school district of Buell, and the school district of Prito Key. That's why they got thousands. And I can tell you right now legislators are not going to bring in 1,000 superintendents in the state of Florida, not going to happen. So don't listen to that kind of propaganda. Now, for the, for the referendum, oh, that was going to mention, Lee County just voted to go back to appointed, okay? Hernando, Lakeland, Hernando, legislators are doing it, and the reason why is, is because one of the things I feared is the governor cannot take action on these appointed superintendents. So that's why you see them flipping back across the state of Florida, because the governors had to go in and remove board members to try to get enough to do what they're supposed to do. And, and that was one of my fears there, and I saw it during COVID, when they defied the governor, I saw it with these social issues when they defied the governor. And, but, with that stated, I'm going to give, I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes. And we got the resolution right here, and I was going to add, 28 school districts have appointed superintendents, 39 school districts have elected here in Florida. You got another one today that got announced that's going to go back to that. So I don't know how this is going to turn out, I'm going to tell you, there's some influential people in Skimby County, okay? They put big money against it last time, I don't know if this grassroots effort will succeed, but I'm willing to give them a chance to see what happens. And with that, I'll see what my fellow board members got to say.
Being, being new on the board, I, I would like to hear from board members who've experienced both. I think y'all have been on the board where you had an elected and an appointed superintendent, and I would just like to hear from the board members that have experienced that.
You mean, how does it affect the?
Whatever your opinion is, comparison of, you can compare it or not compare it, or what you think.
Well, I'm probably not a good one to give that, only because I was not, I've been on the board under an elected superintendent until the last two years. Now, you want to talk about the times that I've been working in a Skimby County, then there's been some horrors with the elected superintendent.
Okay.
Because when you change every four years, it creates an effect upon not only the staff, the teachers, but the children. They're not quite sure what's going on. We had one superintendent that took us, I think it was about seven or eight million dollars in the red, and didn't run again. I wonder why. Had one superintendent that was arrested and didn't run again. The politics of the superintendent's elections have caused some of the problems in the stability of the district. And so, this is my first opportunity to work with an appointed superintendent. I don't know that working with the appointed superintendent and the elected superintendent is a whole lot different. I'm able to say the same things to both superintendents. I give my opinion, that's what I was elected to do. I give my criticisms. I take his, their criticisms, I listen to what they have to say. The elected superintendent that I worked with the longest as a board member had 12 years to get it right. Nobody gets it right the first year. It's kind of like when you and I took over a principal's job, I wasn't quite sure I was the principal the first year, because they remember that other guy. And so you worked, you worked to make things good for the students, good for the teachers, and you, you get into things. It takes two or three years to get your system established, and that's what I believe has been the error in this particular part. We have not given the opportunity to get the system established. Very quickly, just talking about some of the things, and you and I both know this too well, we've been looking at books that have been in this district for longer than we've been on this board, and now we're getting rid of them. I didn't buy them. Ms. Hightower has more seniority than I do, she didn't buy them, they were in the library. And so, you know, some of the things that you get credit for, you just kind of inherit them because that's what was, that's what's going on, and some of the things, who knew what we would have, how we would, how we would respond to COVID? Students are still not responding as I wished they would. They didn't, they didn't not go to school and then just come back happy as a lark, that's kind of like my granddaughters who just finished spring break, and getting them all energized and excited about going back to school Monday? Oh, they liked that vacation. Now, they'll, they'll be back in, into it real quick, but that's, that's what we've, we've all been fighting, and that's caused some of the, the, the problems that we see in, in the graduation rate. The whole state went down with the graduation rate, not just one county, the whole state, and as somebody just said, the whole country. So my concern is, we need to make sure that what, what the, what the voters wanted, we give it the adequate time to make sure it will or will not work. I'm not good for two years, I think we have to go the full route.
Ms. Hightower.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Slaton pointed out, I do have the seniority up here, and I agree with him. I don't think there's a lot of difference in working with an appointed or an elected from the, the board's standpoint, other than the fact that if three of us decide that the superintendent that we have put into office is not performing adequately, then we have the authority to remove that person. And I think that that's one of the things that some of you that have spoken to us tonight have forgotten. You elect somebody, they're there for four years. I don't, now, I won't say that the particular governor that's sitting today would not interfere, but in the past governors have been reluctant to take someone out of office that the people put into office. So, I, and I, and I, I have always been a proponent of appointed superintendents, I grew up in Alabama in an area that had appointed superintendents, and what I saw was the opportunity for someone to come in. It doesn't have to be somebody from outside when you have an appointed superintendent, but what you do have is a wider field of opportunity where you can look at different people. I would also disagree with one who said that just a few people were in on that selection. Yes, the five of us made the ultimate decision, not you, won't blame you, but, but we had a lot of opportunities for citizen input, and we had a lot of people involved in that When people are talking about it is the superintendent's fault that the books are being put back on the shelf, the five of us made that vote, not the superintendent. So when you want to get upset with someone, you need to be directing at it to five of us. And I know, I hear you, I hear you. It's your right to vote or not vote, and many people who come and mash their teeth also do not vote, but they will stand and talk about it. When, when this particular superintendent came to town, there was a lot of things going on in our community, in our state, in our country. He brought with him a plan for how to improve our district. Unfortunately, COVID hit, we had, as we had last night and tonight, a divided opportunity here. Some of the people were scared over COVID, some people were laughing in the face of COVID, but our governor had closed our schools, and that was under the previous superintendent, and then they reopened. He has not, until this year, had a somewhat normal year, and I say that with quotes. And so, to me, going back after really having this opportunity of, of an appointed superintendent for two years, and we did evaluate him last year, there was an evaluation done, and it's available online for any of you to see it, and you can see how we evaluated him. And so, and then he's had the process of putting together a strategic plan that will see us through the next five years. We have what I most admire about his particular style of leadership is he is emphasizing instructional leadership. He is in our schools, helping our principals and our leadership and our teachers know how to improve our system. And as our mayor pointed out, and I've seen it in several publications, we were 53 the last, last time it was tested, and now we're at 48. I'm not saying that's great, but I'm also disputing the fact that you have said we're 60th, which is not true. I, I will say, I will go back and look at the website, but I have not found every website to be accurate.
It's graduation rates.
The thing about it is, the public has had a chance to speak, this is now the board's time, so comments from the public really aren't appropriate, okay? Let's just be respectful that the board is now in discussion, and let us do that.
Also, as Mr. Adams was pointing out, there were a couple of districts that are going back to elected. I will also point out to you, in this fairly divided room, that five to six elected superintendent, appointed superintendents after the last election have been dismissed. So again, your anger should be directed at us. I will say, each one of us is elected by a different constituent. As one person pointed out, you get to vote for the person in your geographic location. The people in my district are sending me emails, are calling me, and they're in support of an appointed superintendent. So I'm going to continue to support the appointed superintendent. What we have to do as a board is learn how to, to give direction to the person that we have hired, and we have to know how to evaluate that person effectively so that we know that the job is being done and our students are benefiting from that leadership model.
Well, thank you for your input, and I'll, I'll just, that helps me quite a bit. I'd just like to say that we are living in a, a time that we need to have strong leadership. As I spoke to a group of gentlemen, I expressed to them that when people are going through very tough times, then you need to have extremely strong leadership, even to the point of just encouragement and giving hope. And what I want to do is make sure we have that type of strong leadership. People voted for me to be in this position to speak for them, have 35 years of experience and have did everything from classroom teacher to administration, have seen eight superintendents. I believe I know a good one when I see one, and I know how to evaluate personnel. I'm at the point now where I see things I expect out of Dr. Smith, and I hope that I see them. My support is for the kids and the teachers and administrators and the community. One of the things I ran on is that we want to make a difference and continue to make a difference in our community. We're going through some extremely, extremely tough and difficult times, and as I've mentioned to many of my constituents, anyone that is, would be superintendent now would be going through a very difficult time, and that's not to say y'all will vote one way or the other if it came up, because I'm on the fence on that. But I will be voting to keep an appointed superintendent.
All right, I will be the last one to speak. All right, now, I will be the last one to speak, um, as the chair, and, and I will relate that I do not intend to talk about our current superintendent. We're talking about a referendum to, to talk about how the superintendent gets in place and, and not the merits or, or whatever of the current superintendent. So Dr. Smith has nothing to do with this. My school career was with an appointed superintendent as a student, and our school district was not well-served, but our community was happy because they, they chose school board members who then put that, that superintendent in place. That superintendent worked with our schools growing up and worried about the board members being happy and not what the conditions in the classroom were, not what the materials in the classroom were, not what the quality of instruction was, because the, the primary focus was that. When I moved to Pensacola in 1976, it was the first time I worked for an, an elected superintendent. That was a new thing to me. In North Carolina, I worked under an appointed superintendent. Again, the conditions in the class were, were terrible because the superintendent was not worried about what happened in the classroom or with the kids or with the materials or with the building. He worried about what the board thought of keeping him. Now, I have a tainted background, okay? I've not been exposed to stellar appointed superintendents myself. I'm not talking about current. So I come with a bias, and I'll say that upfront. I've worked in this district since 1976. I've seen all the same superintendents come and go as anybody else on this board. I've seen ones who were mediocre, ones who gave, and, and as I was moving along from 1976 to 2000, we always were compared to Santa Rosa County. It hit me, not being the smartest knife in the drawer, but it hit me what they had in Santa Rosa County was not a brilliant person. They had consistency. Benny Russell, many of your older folks will remember Benny Russell was an 18-year-long superintendent in Santa Rosa County. The consistency in leadership is one of the most important things that could happen. The, the teachers, the administrators, and others knew they didn't have to wait four years and that superintendent would be gone, and we won't have to listen to whatever program he's bringing, whatever ideas, whatever changes he's made, it'll change. We just wait him out. That changed in 2000 when we had the first, I believe, first in like 40-some years, two-term superintendent under Jim Paul. There were things that happened that people were very uncomfortable with, closures and other stuff, but he dug us out of a financial situation that was near catastrophe. He raised teacher salaries from 65th or 66th in this state to 38th in four years. Okay? So those are some of the things that get put on those websites, not necessarily just grades for the district, but where you rank according to salaries, where you rank according to experience, what, so you need to be careful when you look at websites what you're comparing. I go on to say that we then had a three-term superintendent, Mr. Thomas. There are people on this board that didn't agree with Mr. Thomas, and there's those that did, but it was, he was chosen by the people. I say all this to say, it does not matter how a superintendent gets into that position. What matters is the superintendent and what he does when he's in that position. I also say this, consistency is very important. When we've had multiple year term superintendents, we've made more progress than we ever did under all the years prior to that. And I don't disparage those gentlemen who worked to do the things that they believed in. But I think the consistency is important. I'll only use one piece of data. The average term of an appointed superintendent in the state of Florida is 2.9 years. That's not a long time to make changes, and that's not the kind of consistency that the school district and institutions that are as large as this, that's one of the big differences too, and nationwide. If it changes every year in a, in a school district of 2,000, that's an easy overcome. If it changes every four years in a school district of 40,000, that's hard to keep that ship moving in the right direction. I will say this, I also was on the ballot this last November, and everywhere that I spoke, and everyone I spoke to asked me to support a referendum for the elected. I will do that for them. I do not do it because I say it has to be this way or this way. I see pluses and minuses to both sides, and I go back to this. However they get there is not as important to me as the person who's in that seat and what they do when they're in that seat. I will vote for the referendum, but it appears to be a minority. I being the last one to speak on this, everyone else has had their chance. Your light's still on, you want to speak again? All right, I was talking to Mr. Williams. There's no other, Mr. Superintendent?
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, thank you all for the conversation, too. This is an extremely important item being voted on. The, the one thing, uh, I'd like to share is, um, and, and really, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm echoing you, what you just shared. In my study, in my dissertation, one of the things I found was the, the stability of the superintendent, um, is correlated with the performance of the district and, um, with students moving forward. And I, I, there's a lot I could share because I did a lot of studying on this topic, but I think the key points have been discussed tonight, and, and I highlight that one, as I recall, there were four citations, four resources that, uh, shared and, and asserted the importance of that stability. And I think that's really one of the key pieces here, is we've, we've moved the, this governance structure into a new realm. And, and anytime we do that, there's going to be, um, growth, there's going to be unique things that come along, and it really requires some fortitude and some perseverance and some, some sticking with, if, if you will, as we, as we grow in, in this new governance system, in this governance dynamic of a, of an appointed superintendent. So I, I just wanted to share that because I think the research is out there where, um, it, it really supports not, not making a quick, a quick U-turn, but staying the course and, uh, giving, giving this governance structure an opportunity to grow, and, uh, the, the goal is for it to flourish, 'cause, you know, there were a lot of speakers tonight. One thing I, I, I would like to clarify, 'cause I'm not sure what the perception is by, by some of our speakers, but my job is all about our kids learning and growing and moving forward, period. That's what, that's what I'm here to do. And so, um, I, what, what I get up to do is to try to do what's gonna help, help our kids move forward in, in this district. And, um, that's one of the things I just love about our new vision, where we're, we speak of success for every child, because that's the goal. And quite frankly, um, we've got a lot of work to do, a tremendous amount of work to do. We've, we've got some achievement gaps that we've, we have to move forward on, we have to conquer those, and those are Herculean. You look across the country, they exist. But we need, we need every, every child moving forward, and, and our goal is for them to cross that stage of graduation with tremendous opportunity and choice available to them because we've connected and we've, we've reached every child. So thank you for hearing that, I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you, sir. No further discussion, let's vote.
Motion does not carry, two to three.
Our next item, we have items from the superintendent. Um, disciplinary reassignments, Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recommend approval for Item A, disciplinary reassignments, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Move we adopt the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
I have a fir- a, a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Next, Item B, formal hearing request and recommenda- recommended orders. What is your recommendation, sir?
Recommend approval for Items B, formal hearing request and recommended orders, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Recommend we adopt the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Motion moved and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, I, I was looking at this, so one of the hearings has been conducted, and the other one's been requested, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure I.
Customarily, these, um, in the grid for the disciplinary reassignments, there is a notation, but since this one is an expulsion rather than, uh, it, it's the same as we do, it's just in a different location.
Okay.
Because it's a different action.
Any other discussion?
Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. There are no employee discipline, no other items from the superintendent, nothing from internal auditing.
Could we get a plaque for that?
There is an item, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Nothing from.
I get impatient.
Nothing under internal auditing. Lastly, lastly, and it's not even midnight, items from the general counsel. The item is a settlement authorization, is there a motion?
Move the approval of the settlement authorization.
Second the motion.
And move in a second, if any discussion?
Motion carries, five to zero.
This concludes our, our agenda items, ladies and gentlemen. We are now adjourned.